For the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we do every week, I will start by offering a period of public comment. If you have a comment related to the property tax classification item on the agenda, you can make that comment during the public hearing. But any other comments from anyone joining us tonight? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to the public hearing. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Do we have a motion that we open a public hearing to discuss the property tax classification?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're now in a public hearing. So, we are here to, this is to talk about the property tax classification shift. I think we have a presentation from our assessor? No? And/or Ms. Savage? Oh, sorry, David.
That's okay. We're here to help.
Yeah, just, well, just go over the paperwork.
Yeah.
So, just to give you a little background on this, last year, you, the board that was in place, accepted a factor of 139. That was last year. But going into this year, which is a different situation for the assessing office totally. The assessing office put in brand-new software, which wasn't just jumping from one software to another. It's our complete database. So, the assessors' office has Patriot Properties. Now, it's our CAMA system. And CAMA stands for Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal System. That's all it is. And what it does is do all our calculations. So, we had a brand-new CAMA system installed this year into the assessing office. Plus, we also did a revaluation, and it was our certification year for the state. So, we did all those, which are the three major projects for any assessing office. We got them all done within a year. And I've only been here seven months.
Well, let me tell you, Patriot Property, that's a great tool. It really is a very easy-to-use tool. So, I really like that tool. Very easy to use.
Oh, the Patriot tool?
Yeah.
It works great for a town our size, roughly 10,000 parcels with very limited commercial. But it's, the CAMA system itself does great work in residential. And it also does commercial. And whereas we're not just a big blown-out commercial entity, the system works great for us.
We'll just leave it there. We'll just leave it at that.
Right, and it-
Because I think you were going somewhere else.
Oh, no, 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 no. I came to this town, I had worked with Patriot Properties on and off, but I've worked with the three major CAMA systems in the country. And I've worked with Munis, which is the new tax-collecting system, payroll system we have. So, it's just a little adjustment here and there, finding out about all the new state laws I didn't know about. So, what I've done is put together your standard shift pages for you, which I don't know if all of you were in the same position last year, but the board last year had the same exact thing, just with different dollar numbers. Because our income has come up. We did have substantial increases in value, not just due to the reevaluation, but we had several major commercial properties get bought and converted, instead of just sitting there vacant. And we had several other commercial properties finish what they were doing and fully come online. So, we had an awful lot of income besides the revale. Roughly, the town changed value about almost half a billion dollars, which is pretty substantial. So, the pages you have in front of you show the shifts. And the first page that we always go over is a one factor, which means there is no shift at all. That means the tax rate for commercial and residential would be the same. And I don't know what your idea is. Okay, unfortunately, you have to go like three pages forward for some reason. I don't know if the pages get mixed, but that's 136. Oh, okay. So, what I've done is I've broken out the no shift, which is the 1%, and then what you've usually done is look at the 36% shift to commercial, the 38%, and the 39%. So, that, and they fall right in line with last year's. And what I've done for you is done what the previous assessor has done and highlight those factors on the tax all spreadsheet, so you could see what the adjustments would be for property and what the percentages would be relative to what he did last year. Because the exact numbers can never hit. But between the crew working on this, Andrew and Lynn, we believe we've highlighted the numbers, and they are the same factors as last year. And it gives you something to look at. You can pick whatever factor the selectmen so desire.
On the front sheet, you see a series of colored stripes. The green represents, you know, runs from really green to blue, just so that they're each differentiated. One is actually not left covered. So, 136 shift, 138 and 139. And the reason Dave's done that is 139 was the shift that you used last year.
Yes.
138 and 139 result in more or less the same discussion the board has had over the last five years. One's a little higher, one's a little lower. And 136, given a year in which the values have increased, there's some debt exclusions rolling off, the shift between apartments and twos and condos from residential, given opportunity to go to a 136, still stay generally within the philosophy that the board has formed.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that was my first question. Because condos have gone up significantly. Multi-families everywhere in this region have gone up significantly.
Yes.
So, there's that balance between a single-family home and a multi-dwelling of sort, whether it be condo. So, you're suggesting 136 kind of, not 136, 138 sort of evens that all out? Is that what you just said?
No, I'm saying 139 and 138 on either side. So, the standard we adopted several years ago under the board's direction, I think it was 2012, was an opportunity to stay, was an opportunity to stay somewhere between 87% and 13% on average. That was sort of the discussion the board had. They had a relationship in '11, wanted to keep that the same. And so, that percentage split has been somewhere approximately, using approximations, 87% residential and 83% and 13% commercial. And after the shift, that goes to about 83% on the residential, so a 4% shift, increasing, decreasing the residential and increasing the commercial. That's been the standard practice. And so, 138 or 139 in this case gets you to that result. Why is it more than one? Because one's a little higher or one's a little lower?
So, you do 138.5?
If it was possible.
Unfortunately, they don't-
That'd be really creative.
But it also falls in line with what Andrew had told me is the mindset of the selectmen is that you're looking for around that $3 million dollar factor as a number that would move over.
Correct.
And 138 is $3,400,000, and 139 is $3,500,000. So, you know, there's not a big difference of what you're changing over to commercial. But you are-
Well, the reason that we've done that in the past, because we, there was a point where commercial was going down, 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 and residential was going up, up, up. And a lot of it's done, by the way, you process it, so forth and so on, that we felt as, oh, let's, okay, let's try to even it off and then keep it relatively stable going forward, unless there's some really huge change in the real estate economy or whatever that would, we have to do something different. But that's kind of been our philosophy in the last five years, so.
So, to supplement David's work, are these charts at the back? Just to give you an historical perspective, going back five fiscal years to the change in values by category, very, it might be easier for you to look at the screen. But the, as you can see, the single families in 2019 have gone up, as they have each and every year for the last five fiscal years. But if you look at the condominiums the last two years, if you look at the three families, if you look at the apartments specifically, which have seen some, you know, we all know that right now, large developers are building these things. They're very profitable enterprises. What you'll see in '19 is not just that regular, single family is going up and commercial is going up, but other categories within the residential realm have gone up dramatically, which means that they share more of the burden to the tax levy.
I know.
And this is intimating a little bit why we also decided to show 136. Because under 136, it reduces the impact on the commercial. It gives the commercial a bigger benefit. But since the single-family residential are all going to see property tax cuts, they're actually going to see a decline. Single-family homes are going to see a pretty sharp decline in their actual tax bill. It gives an opportunity to reduce that reduction to a certain degree and shift that to commercial, to the commercial properties' benefit. So, that's why we showed that.
Shifted off the commercial.
Shifted off the commercial.
But the important point, though, I think with that is that underlying this is that the value of these properties has increased. So, even with a shift in the rate, it is still based upon the value. So, you know, not, careful not to muddy the waters. That is, homes and particular types of property have appreciated significantly over the past year, and some even more than others. So, that while we're dealing with the shift, the fact is the underlying asset has gotten more valuable.
Correct. Even though the tax rate may go down, the values do go up.
Right.
And that's the standard ping-pong we play in the assessing office all the time, because values change constantly.
Right.
But you're the only ones that do the tax rate. So, we try to put it together so that you can make your best decision as to what the economy's doing right now in the town. And it has been fueled going up, but not just residential. Everything has been going up.
But having said that, this information is based upon a year ago. It's not what's going on today.
But I can tell you, as of today, your town is moving forward, because I operate in three years, unfortunately, so my heads are always together. I operate in the year behind us, the current year, and the one that we're working on right here.
And are you feeling as though that it's going up, but it's still kind of going up at the same rate that it has last year? The three years, as we just talked about.
For the last three years, it's gone up roughly about the same. The revale just pulled together a lot of numbers that weren't looked at individually. Because in the revale, we look at everything versus off-years. We only look at certain strata groups. But during a revale year, we have to look at it all. So, we adjust everything accordingly. But in a non-certification revale year, that's not a revale year, we only look at strata's of property, which Garrett would have done, and adjust just strata's if they needed it. So, we had a lot of little stuff there that all came up at once in the revale. And looking at it, because, you know, roughly, the feds have not jumped the interest rate in any drastic amount yet. I believe the economy will still carry on the way it's still going right now in this municipality.
Well, the thing is, and you know, just as well as everybody even at home, that you can buy a house for what it will cost you to rent an apartment, pretty much, with the interest rates. I mean, not a substantial house, but you can buy a pretty good-sized house for the same of what they're charging for rent. So, it's, that's all good for everybody.
The other supplemental schedule we threw in here was to give you a sense of the allocation of the property tax values by category.
That's a good question.
I think puts things in perspective. 60, up till this year, on average, it's been about 69% born by the single-family property owner. This year, because of the value shift, so much value, so much, there's been so much increase in the condominiums and the apartments. That value shifted probably more dramatically than it has in the last 10 years with the single-family homes as a percentage of value. So, as relates the sheets you've seen in terms of the impact on average commercial and average residential, the reason why the average residential, single-family home is seeing a decline really is a couple of contributing factors. One is that we had more than $1.2 million in excluded debt roll-off this year,
That's great.
which is significant. That will have an impact on how much your tax levy is. And two, because residential is proportionally seeing, owning less of the total burden, you see the jump from 69.1 in '18 to 66.7. That means that they enjoy the benefit, because as a function of the total, of the total chi, they will pay less of the levy. So, the combination of those factors is why, under any of the scenarios, 136, 1.38, 1.39, the single-family residential taxpayer will see a decrease on a basis of about a $490,000 home of about $300.
Yep, right, right, right in that ballpark, within a couple of dollars here and there.
Couple of dollars here and there, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it was 298, but 300 works for me, yeah.
If we were to keep it at 1.39, right?
Right. The property value increase went from 486 to, excuse me, 487 to 496 on an average single-family home, right? How'd I do on that one?
Pardon me?
How'd I do on that one? Was that close?
You're doing great. I mean, good thing we look at the same numbers.
So, in either of the three scenarios, the single-family property tax goes down. It just varies depending on the choice. And quite frankly, under any of the three values, the average commercial also goes down.
Yeah, yes.
Do we have a percentage, a percentage increase for the condominiums? I know that three years ago, we had this discussion, because single-family homes were looking at the same type of reduction, but condos were looking at a dramatic increase. I think it was about 13.5% at the time.
Yeah, it's similar.
And since that's entry-level housing, are we looking at the same type of increase, 13.5%?
It's similar. So, if you take the number, if you take the total value of condominiums and divide it by the number of condominium units, the average condominium value in town is $259,000.
Glad you remembered that, because that one I lost. I'm going, it's 200-something.
$259,000. So, there's definitely an increase on the condominium side, a double-digit increase in terms of the average condominium tax bill. As a dollar value, the average is 259, $259,000, where residential is 496. So, the tax bills are about 50% of one another. But certainly, on the condominium side, there's an increase under any three of these scenarios. The higher the factor, the higher their increase on condo. The higher the factor, the less savings on a single-family home. The higher the factor, the less, the less benefit to commercial.
So, the higher the factor, the greater savings for, or the reduced impact on condominiums?
Head it back.
Any other questions for starters? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will now invite anyone from the public who has a comment to make.
May I approach the board? My name is Will Carpenter. I'm vice president for the Merrimack Valley Chamber. And this is a tradition that I come here before you every year. And I want to thank Chairwoman Keen, Manager Mailer, and the esteemed members of the board for having me here. I'm here basically to represent the 250-plus members of the business community who are actually members of the Merrimack Valley Chamber. And I really just want to thank you all for always taking a very fair and equitable approach to how you see the commercial-industrial rate. Of all the towns that I go before in the valley, you folks have always been fair and equitable. We appreciate that. And we would simply ask that, once again, this sounds like you're on the same path again this year from what I'm hearing. And we would simply ask, again, that you consider the challenges that the business community faces in terms of keeping payroll and keeping residents of the town employed. And in that process, maintain the fairness that you have traditionally fared in keeping the rate for commercial-industrial as fair and equitable as you can. Thank you.
Will, before you go, maybe it is probably not fair of me to ask this of you without giving you a fair warning, and I could have looked it up myself. But where do we, when you look at the Merrimack Valley, where do we fall as far as being competitive to businesses? We usually have done pretty well with what our taxes are.
Yeah, we actually, you posed that question to me about three, three years ago.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you're due with the revale, you're due up again.
So, you guys are good.
Like, one of the lowest, if not Lee's lowest?
Yes, one of, one of these certainly. Very, very reasonable and fair in your assessment. And as the representative of the business community, we certainly appreciate that.
So, you would say, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I will, so we're a business-friendly community?
I could call you a business-friendly community.
Thank you. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Nice to see you again, Will.
You'll see you at MMA?
Most likely.
Thank you.
Be here before we know it.
Anyone else from the public have a comment? Okay. With that, I guess we can close the public hearing. Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay. So, discussion?
So, I mean, I'm willing, I like the idea of going back from the 139 to like a, you know, a 135 or 136 shift. I think, you know, given the challenges of the last three months for the business community with everything that's been going on, I think it's, plus, we have that latitude to do that and still provide a lower rate for both residential and, or a lower tax bill, I should say, a lower tax bill for both residential and commercial. I think, you know, last year, we went, we went to 139. We've been inching it up. And I think this year, ratcheting it back is an opportunity, there's an opportunity there with, as Mr. Mailer said, you know, we retired a significant amount of debt, 1.2 million, that's, that's huge. I mean, I did a double take when I started reading through the documents, like, wow, that's amazing. So, I think we have an opportunity to show some further support and be more of a business-friendly town to our businesses, especially given the events of the last three months.
I think that's a great point, Dick, bringing that up, of what our businesses have gone through. Even, I'll just throw this in, but our weekend of coupons and gift certificates, they, I've heard of astounding things.
That was fantastic.
Yeah. But you're right. You're right to bring that up. I'm not sure, for me, I'd go to the 135, but I'm certainly open to the 136.
It doesn't make a big difference. I mean, 130, the overall change in the, in the tax bills are pretty much insignificant between the two. It's just a mark in the ground, is what I look at it. But, yeah, I mean, I'm-
I came in with the same thinking as well.
So, just for the point of giving some people some context at home, change from the 139 to 136 still means a single-family, average single-family homeowner will see a $350 decline in their tax bill. In that case, the commercial ratepayer would see a decline of $785. So, that 139 to 136 means only $30 less to the single-family homeowner, but $96 more in the pockets of the business owner. And everybody still sees a decrease of those two categories.
Of the single-family?
Of the single-family, in fairness.
So, are you able to peel that layer back just a bit and see what does that mean for the average condo owner?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say if it's $30 for the average single-family homeowner, $496,000, and you're looking at just under, just over 50% of that for the condominium owner, it would mean, instead of, you know, the effect would be another $15 on to them would be an average, sort of a wound of thumb, depending upon the value of their condo.
Another 15 as a, if it went from 139 to 136?
Yes.
1.36?
Yes.
So, what does that year-over-year increase represent if we were to stay at 1.39 for a condo owner?
Do you have the actual increase? I don't have that.
And the only reason why, those are the people that live on limited incomes more so than folks in single-family homes. Those are the people that use, those are the properties that are used to enter the north end of a real estate market. If you're a family starting out, or a young person starting out, or if you're a senior downsizing on a limited income. And that's why I'd be, I would be interested in knowing what the fiscal year, what the actual raw number is. Because if we're talking about $15, that's not so bad, except if they're already looking at a $75 increase.
Yeah, I think they're looking at all of that. I can try to pull the data on it. I would say two things to that. We're finding an increasing number of condominium owners are actually renting. They're renting out their units. The largest percentage of it is people are moving into other units, that's one. Where the home, single-family homes typically are not rental. And two, the difficulty in looking at this in any one year is that it really is a 10-year snapshot. Because from '05 to 2010 and '11, all the value was single-family homes. So, their tax bills were going up every year, because the condominium values were largely, you know, they're challenged, right? And so, what you're seeing now is really part of a long trend. And it is fair to say the condominium owners have been, as I showed on the chart, increasing every year with the residential going up more modestly. But I would say the period dramatically, you know, just before that, the five, six, seven years before that, it was exactly the opposite. And the group carrying the burden year after year was the single-family taxpayer. So, it's a fair comment. I can probably try to fairly quickly calculate that. But the condominium owners certainly are seeing an increase in their taxes this year.
So, do we know what the median value was in '14? I know you just gave-
I have to, I have to try to now calculate it. Yeah, I can work on it.
The things that we all have to bear in mind, though, in order for people to go out to dinner, or go for coffee, or buy something extra, is that they need a little bit more money in their pocket. So, there's this balance between, you know, supporting the businesses, but making sure that our citizens feel pretty good and want to spend too. So, it's a little, it's a bit of a dance.
Well, what we are, the thing, the thing that we haven't put on the chart here, and that's probably part of the challenge of having this conversation with folks is, is really looking at what the differences are for the, for the individual scenario at 36, 38, and 39 by property value and type. And if you kind of laid that out, and you really looked at the relative differences, they're pretty small in that tier. And so, I think that's a piece that, you know, I don't, I hope we don't lose in this conversation, that, you know, we're talking about relatively small incrementals, because overall, the amount of shift doesn't impact the total weight of the prospective savings. In other words, for a single-family home, you're looking at a difference at 136 versus 139 of $30 to $40 relative to $300. You're looking at about half that for a typical condominium value, if I understand what Andrew and the calculations here. So, we're really talking about the incremental difference there, not the underlying savings. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I would say, Phil, that you're right. There's a, there's greater sensitivity at that entry point for values of condominiums. But relative to the, what they're gaining in this marketplace, when you go around and look at surrounding communities, what their tax bill is going to be next year? If you're looking at condominiums in the Merrimack Valley in greater Boston, you're not going to see as this kind of a buffer. So, when you kind of put that in perspective, well, you've got to look at that relatively. If somebody's shopping and looking at our communities opposed to other communities, that incremental difference in the tax bill is probably all in the underlying value of the gain.
I'm not, so when I speak, I'm not talking about the potential buyers in our market, because I think that it's a different type of buyer you're attracting today than you were five years ago for a condo, just based on the increased costs. I'm talking about the person who bought a condo seven years ago. I'm going to, I'm going to use my personal example. I lived in Village Green in 2012, and I remember my first year I got a tax cut, my property tax, but the next year, which happened to be my first year of the Board of Selectmen, it was a 13.5% increase. But it was at the same time that we were giving single families. It's just the nature of the beast. We don't, we don't control that. That's a state law that requires that all residential be lumped together. And so, the result is sometimes, single-family homes go down, well, condos go up and vice versa.
Right.
And I'm just thinking of the average person who's living in a condo right now. What does their last three-year tax bill increases look like? Where, you know, under every scenario, we're looking at single-family homes and businesses getting some type of tax cut. But then, when you peel it back and look at that segment of residential and seeing that, well, they're getting a tax increase no matter what, do we really want to go in a direction where they're getting an even greater tax increase? Or do we want to try to get people as close as possible to savings? It's just, it's, it's worth considering both perspectives, because I think that it's all, it is all relative. I mean, if you're living in a $600,000 home versus if you're living in a, you know, if you purchased a condo five years ago, you probably had a 25% increase in value.
Well, and that's, that's kind of it, which is that, you know, the reason why they're seeing that tax bill is that your underlying value has gone up. And, you know, it's kind of one of those propositions. It's like, would you rather have your value go up? I mean, what's more valuable to you over time? The underlying asset or what's out of pocket with taxes? The underlying asset or what's out of pocket with taxes? And it's the underlying asset. Right? If a property appreciates, if your tax bill goes up by, you know, a couple of hundred dollars a year, but the underlying asset, what that, that condo itself goes up by several thousand dollars a year in value, that incrementally is the savings to that, to that owner. It truly is.
When that person sells.
Or can take a home equity loan, or, but we can't solve all scenarios, but underneath it all, that person's rebound in value is a function of how this community is looked at, right? The attractive, attractiveness of new businesses, the, the growth, all those things feed into that savings that they have captured within that condominium.
I will tell you from my experience that people do notice our lower taxes in the end of the year. They're deciding between one community and the other, which have somewhat of an equal reputation, or pros and cons. And they're thinking, boy, I can get this much house for this money, including the taxes, than if I went to this community.
That's totally true.
I mean, I used to, I haven't done it in years, but I would do an analysis of, I'll just make this up, of a $500,000 home, say, in Andover, sale price, not assessed value, because it's for the, the person, it brings it home. So whether it be 500 in Andover, 500 sale price in North Andover, 500 in Methuen, you know, and just keep going around. And I haven't done it in a long time, we were about $1,000 cheaper than the most expensive community in the area. And that's a lot per year. I should, I should just do it out of curiosity, just for the heck of it, but it was, makes a big difference, so.
So you guys have done a real nice job of ask, doing this discussion long enough to help me do some math.
Oh, there you go. We're so happy to oblige.
I'm all set, if you want.
Good.
So, so the answer to the question is the sing, the average condominium went last year, these are rough numbers, from about 220 to 259. So you went from 220 last year on average, using the number of parcels by the total value, to 259 this year. The effect of that is that, at the, at, the average increase for the condominium is $300. If you go into a 136, it's 315. If you stayed at 139, it's 300. So their taxes on average, because their value is going up so much compared to the total.
Sorry, you said it would go to 315 at 1.36, and it would stay at 300, that's what, 139?
139 is 300, and it's $15 more to go to 136. So there's the 15, but they're going to 300.
So the average condo owner, the median con, the median?
That's an average.
So the, the average condo owner is going to look at minimum a $300 increase anyways?
Not a minimum, because if you're below the average, the past.
That's the, I said the average, the average.
The average is $300. Yes. If it's below that, then if you last, if it's more than that, it would be more.
So let me get this right. So, so what you're saying to a consumer is, that condominium, we're going to reduce your tax bill by about $300, and oh, by the way, that gained in value 17, almost 18%, we're going to increase your tax.
Increase your tax bill.
Right, right. But, but that's under, your underlying value, as, you know, that's, you, you've got to kind of weigh that in there someplace. Everybody's got to look at their own property, but that's a pretty good trade-off.
Yeah.
Only if you're going to sell. I mean, if you're, if you're a condo owner, I mean, I'm going to use this, a lot of my neighbors have lived in Village Green for decades. And the board of directors at Village Green have all lived there since they were apartments, which was the 1970s. And those people, like, they're not, they're older, but they're not rushing to sell anytime soon, so that value, I mean, I guess their kids may appreciate it if they choose to sell and they want to go live with, you know, leave that money to their kids and then go move into an in-law briefly, but, I mean, if they're staying in those condos, I mean, it's, ultimately, it's silly, because we're debating $15, and I understand that. But I guess it's just always being sensitive to that fact, that these people are looking at a dramatic increase no matter what, and every scenario lays out a decrease for single families and for businesses.
And I think it's a perfectly accurate perspective on it. I think that you just be cautious that three years from now, as residential's going up and the condos going down, you don't, I mean, doing sort of this, this is really the difficult part of factoring, right? Because the value is the value. The taxes are going up 300, right? So what you're really talking about is the change in the factor, which has some impact. And I guess that very well could be a means testing factor as opposed to value, which isn't. It is what the value is. So you've got to decide from your perspective whether or not the benefit to commercial, of, so the commercial change under what, under the 136, the commercial taxpayer, I did this on a different sheet of paper, is somewhere in the $96 range, $96 on the average commercial ratepayer, and some of those are small businesses, right, from going from 139 to 136. The average condo would go from increasing by 300 to increasing by 315 to do the shift. And the average single-family home would go from saving 380 to saving 350.
That's 1.39 to 1.36.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I would say, you know, to, to your point, Phil, the, the other, the other part of looking at those, a lot of single-family owners were impacted by the event, you know, the, the gas event here. And so for some of those people, that savings of 300 or 350 or 375, you know, has some value to them too, because there are people who've owned those houses for a long time too. So I guess we're really talking about the dispersion of, you know, kind of that. And when you look at it in its total, I'm, again, kind of leaning more towards that 136, because I think it kind of recognizes, kind of spreading that across the community fairly, fairly evenly. Businesses get some gain, they were particularly hurt, single-family, and multifamily owners get some, get some relief, relatively speaking. So I'm, I'm kind of leaning that way.
And we'll tell you, about 10 years ago, condos over here at Sutton Pond, they went down, and they are now just about where they were 10 years ago, which is kind of interesting.
I, I just feel like we should really take advantage of the fact that we have this debt off of our books, and that we have an opportunity to kind of come back down. If you look at, over time, we've, we've kind of, we were at 136, I think, before I was the selectman, but it, it kind of kept, keeps, kept creeping up. And now we have an opportunity to kind of, I won't say reset, but at least get a little bit back to maybe what's more normal.
But it, it crept up not, not because of generating taxes, it crept up because we, as a board, had expressed an interest to have an 83%, 17-ish percent split. And so that's why we gradually moved from 1.3, I think even 3.4, to 3.5, to 3.9, where we are today, because we wanted to be, even though our community is about 88% residential, we wanted the tax burden to only be shared by approximately 83%. So that's why we would do the shifts. And it wasn't, it wasn't so much about generating, it was always about that, making sure that we showed with the burden. So it didn't have to do with good or bad economics, per se, although I think that that probably earlier on, not having been on the board, was probably a conversation about why that was worth moving that direction. I just, I think under any scenario, every scenario, residential and industrial overall save, they're getting money back. They're going to see, single-family homeowners and commercial property owners are both going to see, regardless of, of what quartile they fall in, under the 1.39, they get savings no matter what. The tax bill, the actual raw number, is going to go down, so if people are comparing North Andover to Andover, or Methuen, or Haven at Lawrence, we have a story that the others can't tell, because we have debt coming offline, which is allowing us to have this kind of leapfrog effect, where we can lower the tax rate. And at the same time, we don't have to consciously make the decision to move to a factor that further, however minor, further puts the burden on the people who own the least expensive properties. I mean, property taxes are regressive by nature, but when you consider that, how this is going to impact, I mean, we haven't talked about multifamilies, because I think that's a different story if you're a multifamily owner, but when you consider the...
Rents are going up, though.
They are, exactly. So it's a different story. But when you think about, again, the communities, I mean, for me, I'm thinking about the Heritage Green, the Village Greens, those people, the folks that walk the road, those people who are owning homes that aren't renting, that are, that own condos because they want to stay in the community.
The condo fees go up. Those have gone up substantially.
Well, that, that is not, you never have these debates at those meetings. I mean, the condo fee is always going up, the condo fee never goes down. And when I think about Village Green, for instance, I mean, we're talking about, this increase is going to be the equivalent of adding a whole other month of fees over there. Same, I think, for Heritage Green as well. So it's just, to make a conscious decision to go to another factor where people are going to realize savings in every category, no matter what, but there's this one category that's going to see an increase, no matter what, but they would see an even greater increase if we went to 1.36. I mean, the story ultimately for business owners, if we're trying to attract businesses, is there, no matter what. What kind of intent?
Just as a note, but it's not, it doesn't have the same personal connection as, as do condos, should be noted that the apartment complexes are now assessed at 54.4% higher in 2019, which is the largest increase across the board. Like, places like large rental complexes, like rural press. So the group that has seen the greatest increase this year is actually apartment buildings at 54%. From a value perspective, a pretty dramatic increase in value from what was just under 3% to over 4%.
And we're still looking at cutting the rate by $2, approximately, $1.50, approximately. We're going from 21.34, under the 1.39 factor, we'd go from a $21.34 rate to a $19.70 rate for commercial. I mean, that's a pretty great story. That's not happening in any other community in the Merrimack Valley, no matter what type of debate they have, it just can't happen. And when you consider that, we're going literally a dollar down, we're going from residential at a $14.53 rate to a $13.53 rate. Again, that's an awesome story to be able to tell. No matter what, our, our condo owners are going to feel a burden, are going to feel that, that pinch of an extra $300, but I feel that we, as a board, can say, well, we've kept on the path that we've consistently been going on, instead of consciously making the decision to place even more of the burden on them.
I don't think it's accurate to say we're placing more of a burden on them. You're, you're a little bit misspeaking when you say that. We're not placing a burden on them by...
If, if we were to go to a 1.36, we would be straying from what this board's philosophy had been for the past four cycles, which is the 83%, 17% split. And so we would be consciously making the decision to go and place the burden on more of the residential. We would.
You're, you're making it sound like we're taking off of a single-family and putting it onto a condo by saying, get, putting the burden on them.
Then I'll, then I'll clarify, but we, we are, it is, it's, the whole, this whole is...
They are feeling more of a burden, because their value went up, regardless.
But we...
But we're not shifting off of a single-family homeowner and putting it on a condo owner.
No, but we're shifting...
That's what you're making it sound like.
Well, to be clear, this, this is...
We're all going to have the same rate.
Yeah.
This discussion is about, is about a burden. We're just, we're placing...
It's a burden, not, it's a very nit point, what you're making it sound like.
So let me clarify, so tonight's, tonight's debate is about the burden shared by commercial versus the burden shared by residential.
Correct.
The debate of whether we should go from 1.39 to 1.36 is about whether we want to shift more of the burden from commercial to residential. Now, in that scenario, residential, no matter what, those single families get a tax cut. Commercial, under any scenario, get a tax cut. The folks who own condominiums will see a tax increase under either scenario, but they will see an even greater increase if we go to the 1.36 or 1.35 factor, which in and of itself is not consistent with what the philosophy of this board has been in prior years.
They've also seen an increase in the value of their property.
They have, they have seen...
That's, and a couple of years ago, it was homeowners, it's our increase in the value of their property. And, I mean, single-family homeowners, they...
I, I, I get it, but again, under every scenario, single-family homeowners get to see money go back into their pockets. Under every scenario, no matter what quartile you're in, commercial gets to see money go back in their pockets. The only group, the only groups, I should say, are multifamily homeowners and condominium homeowners. Why would we move in a direction where we place, again, everybody still gets money in their pockets under every scenario? Why would we go in a direction where those people that are already paying will have to pay even more? Maybe that's a better...
There were years where a single-family was picking up more, the condo owners, when the, which was a whole unfortunate situation for condo owners.
Value has changed, unfortunately, and it's...
And that would be, and my position...
It's catching up to more of the norm, you know?
My position would be different if those were the type of scenarios that we're talking about. I mean, I guess I'd, I'd have to see, well, what was the cut, what would the cut look like under a scenario where commercial, would commercial be getting a cut in that scenario, or they're not getting a cut? I mean, there are a lot of different variables, right? How are commercial properties treated? How are single families treated? How are multifamilies treated? Under this scenario, we're literally looking at a slice of residential that is going to see an increase either way, and a slice of residential that is going to see a cut either way, and all of commercial that's going to see a cut either way. So why not go in the direction where we minimize the increases while people still get their cuts? And it would be us staying consistent with what our own philosophy has been, where we want to have an 83% burden fall on residential and a 17% burden fall on industrial.
Wait, when you say 80, where is, where is the 83% burden?
Under the first page, under the shift.
They're all within an 83% range.
Yeah, so they're all, yeah.
Yeah, they're 83, they're like, yeah, 1.36.
If we're not being inconsistent with that, so...
No, at 1.36, it would be...
You're moving in the direction.
Hold on, I'm talking now. At 1.36, it would be 83.63 and 16.37. So it's, you know, it's in that, it's in the...
It's the factor we already have. It's not, to say, to say we would stay at 1.39, no one could call us inconsistent. No one could say that we were not trying to treat everybody fairly. No one could say that we weren't going for the best possible tax rates, and that the story out of this meeting would be that our businesses are getting a tax cut and our residents are getting a tax cut. No matter what, again, our condominium owners are getting a tax, are going to see their values go up, so they're seeing, they're, they're seeing a tax increase despite the fact that the rate is going down.
I completely agree with you, but there would be some who, probably will, who's not here, who would say the businesses aren't seeing a tax cut, because you're not at 1-1. You're at 139.
Right.
So I'm just saying, the, the business perspective might be a little, maybe a little different.
A true business-friendly community is in one, one...
It is one, a one shift, it's one.
It's not, and we're...
I never said we weren't over business.
You did not say that.
I hope that we're business-friendly.
What you said is completely accurate.
We are, you know, we are more friendly than other communities.
But I would make a very strong argument that they are assessed totally different than residential property, and the one doesn't, isn't necessarily there, but we, we don't need to talk about that tonight. It's confusing enough as it is.
Did we close the public hearing? Yes, good, okay.
We're discussing...
Sorry, I got, I lost track there.
We're discussing...
I mean, I think, Phil, I mean, I think what you're, what you're trying to tease out of this or struggling with, I can appreciate it, but it's the, it's the built-in problem of dealing with a pool of, that makes up the community. And the challenge is, when you're trying to make a policy decision that's going to affect a pool, the, the reality is, there's a deep end and there's a shallow end. And there are some people that are going to benefit significantly more than others. We do our best to make it fair, and I think the fact that we've got these calculations that try to keep it all relative do that, but I think it's inherent in our decision that there is going to be some parties that are going to benefit slightly proportionately more than others. The, what ameliorates that a little bit, and I think in terms of, I think the analysis here, is that underneath it all, you're talking about not just taxing somebody, but it's why they're being taxed that way, it's their underlying value has gone up. And it is the flip side of that, when that underlying value went down or was deeply down, that you don't have, you're going to have this discussion in a different manner. There's always going to be somebody that's going to be impacted slightly disproportionately when you're dealing with a pool. So at the end of the day, I think it's a question of, how do we spread the best good among all those parties? And I think that's a choice between the, you know, 1, the 36 and the 39. What's the best way to spread it among the parties? And, and, I mean, are you willing to hear a motion yet, Madam Chair?
Yes, I was going to say, I think we've had all the arguments. I mean, it feels like we're kind of saying the same things at this point. I don't know if anyone has a new...
So, it's important if you go to a motion, that you use these in your motion, which are the factors as the DOR knows them? So, I should not have circled one. I thought the conversation was leaning in a certain direction. I'm not attempting to influence...
I don't have my glasses, so that...
So, you need to name the factor that's to the right of the, get it?
I don't have anything that's circled, so I...
No, it's a different sheet.
Oh, it's not in there, it's a separate motion, huh? All right. Hopefully, it's on you.
It's on me, just nothing like volunteering, huh?
Do you want some glasses?
It's not going to help, it doesn't help the brain. I didn't get that. Where?
Which one?
Thank you, because I didn't get it, okay, great. I move that the Board of Selectmen adopt a residential factor of 1.36 for...
No, you need the number to the right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry?
Need the number to the right.
Oh, oh, factor of .950700 for the purpose of classifying the FY 2019 North Andover property tax rates.
And to clarify, that was the 1.36.
1.36, yes, for the public.
All right, the motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes four to one. Sorry, while I look for my agenda, I can do a second. Oh, here we go. All right, the next item on our agenda is a request of Fire Chief William McCarthy to surplus 16 sets of personal protective firefighter gear.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that, we, I'm sorry. We make, I'll make a motion to approve the request of Chief William McCarthy to surplus 16 sets of personnel protective fire, personal protective firefighter gear per his memorandum dated November 27, 2018. And I will waive the reading of that memo by the clerk.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is a request of Carol Bradstreet on behalf of the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation to use Drummond Park on Saturday, May 18, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the Great Strides Walk to Cure Cystic Fibrosis. Is Carol with us?
Move before we...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request from the North Andover Farmers Market Planning Committee to close First Street from Main Street intersection to the entrance of 15 First Street every Sunday beginning June 16, 2019, through September 29, 2019, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I know we have people in the audience from the Farmers Market Committee. I don't know if you have...
So, I will join. I will refuse myself from voting. I will join Hillary and Chris to ask, although it's pretty self-explanatory, so I don't know.
If you would like to say any words.
How about a recap of last year?
Yeah. If you could just give your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Hillary Sissos, 15 Fort Smith Street.
Chris Allen, 3 Bellmont Street.
We are on the planning committee of the North Andover Farmers Market.
So, we can give a recap of last year, I guess. We had a really successful season last year, and we also sort of started a new venture along with Sally Finnemore, who's not here, but the artisan market, which ran monthly down at the mills. And it was a great time for people to come down and actually take a hayride between the farmers market and the artisan market, get a lot of foot traffic in our downtown. We had 30 vendors, I think, throughout the season, and we partnered with the nonprofits at the PTOs and had our slush tent again this year, and they raised, I think, over $3,500 of money for various schools and Lazarus House and stuff. So, it was a great season, especially we increased our, I guess, presence downtown compared to the previous year.
Particularly because of the artisan market, we increased our presence. I mean, it was dramatic, the amount of people who were walking up and down the full length of Main Street all the way down to Water, so that turned out very well. One small thing, not so close, whatever. At the end of our season, it was kind of exciting. As you all know, we were really concerned about being able to hold the market for, especially our last weekend, because First Street was sort of upside down because of all the work that was happening there. And so, my husband Larry and I walked down there a couple of times just to see, because we honestly didn't know, can we have the market? It was our last day. Can we have the market? Can we have the market? Plus Columbia Gas took over our space. It was exciting. So, we walked down there, and the guys are all there, and it's Saturday, and they're working Saturday late. And so, the thing to do is, as we know now, you find the fellow in the truck with the white hat, you talk to him and say, what do you think? Are you working on Sunday? He goes, no, there's no way we're working on Sunday. I promise you we're not. And I was like, really? And he was quite charming, because he said, he wanted so badly to go home. And he was going home, and he said, we're not working on Sunday. And I said, well, do you think the street will be in shape for the farmers market? He said, I'm going to make sure that there's nothing here. It's going to be fine. There'll be no trucks here. And there were these huge trucks on the street. And he said, they're not going to be here. You're going to be fine. And when we came there Sunday morning, I mean, it was, it was perfect. We were so grateful. The boots on the ground were the best people right there. They were so accommodating. They turned themselves inside us to help us, help make sure that we had a market. Just those last two markets were tough, and so, we really appreciated that. So, that's my little story. Yes, 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 yes. Yes, indeed, to everyone else who put their two cents into that. But it was, was very gratifying to see the street in good order when we showed up in the morning.
Yeah, they did, they did help us, because it's a volunteer-run market, as you know, so all of the tents we have to set up, you know, and break down and all the sandbags, and it's right. And the Columbia Gas folks did help us pack all in.
They did. They did, as a matter of fact, I got to direct them. You go here, quiet, for about a half an hour. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for all you do at the farmers market. It's been obviously huge success for the town. We really appreciate your effort.
So, one, one thing is that on a future agenda, we did purchase $2,000 of additional hardware for the streetlights. And so, the time I remember talking, and so, we, we had our banners on there, and then when they switched over to the Town to Read program, that's what's allowing all of those, those additional reads to go down High Street. And so, at a future meeting, we are, as a farmers market committee, we aren't using that hardware for, again, except for those lights. And so, we would have to accept that donation from us too, for the town. And so, just a heads up, we realized that that was a nice gift from us.
Yes, it was a generous donation from the farmers market to the town. This is true, this is true.
So, I guess, looking forward to next year.
I'll tell you, people, I'm sure really appreciate it. What did you mean by that?
Was it the bar?
So, not, yeah.
Oh, well, there was, there was a few missing.
Yeah, so it was 20, we purchased an additional 20, and each bar cost $100, and so...
Going down High Street, yeah.
That was our, so we had, the intention was to go down High Street, but I think that, I mean, they're interchangeable, you could use them anywhere.
Yeah, we, we, there was a mishap.
We have them now, so...
That's great, great. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I'll move to the Board of Selectmen to approve the request of the Farmers Market Planning Committee in front of us today to close the first, to close First Street from Main Street intersection to the entrance of 15 First Street every Sunday beginning June 16, 2019, through September 29, 2019, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Subject to requirements of the Fire Department listed in Chief McCarthy's letter dated December 3, 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Next idol, next two items are the approval of minutes. We have our November 19th and our November 26th open session minutes in our packet.
Madam Chair, motion approval of the November 19th and November 26th meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion to move into licensing?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, into the licensing. We just have two tonight. The first is a request from Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, DBA Bertucci's Brick Oven, for a transfer and pledge of all liquor licenses. They posted the proper legal notices. All the water and sewer tax bills have been paid. Don't think anybody's here from Bertucci's, is that? Wonderful.
Do you have any questions?
Just, could you explain to us sort of what's transpiring?
Of course. So, I am here for Bertucci's. I'm with the law office. As you guys know, the chain is in bankruptcy. So, all across, all nationwide, they're going through bankruptcy. And because of that, there's going, there's a transfer by order of the bankruptcy court. And it's been bought by a new entity owned by Robert Earl, who's associated with Planet Hollywood and Buca di Bepo. And this application is the same pretty much for all 29 locations in Massachusetts. And it's already been reviewed by the ABCC, giving preliminary approval pending local, local approval. Other than that change, all business operations are remaining the same. So, you shouldn't see any, I don't believe the manager's changing. You shouldn't see any changes. You can probably expect some additional investment in the restaurant just based on the new money coming in. But that's all in the future.
I'm sorry, where'd you get your, your name and...
Sorry, my name is Marielle Cabot. I'm a paralegal for Devolno Offices.
I see that there was a memo to Suzanne Pelich regarding this beginning of November, kind of walking through. No change to the general manager there. Any questions from the board?
So, basically, that they, so Bertucci's has been bought by another company?
Yes.
And so, all of the current management structure is staying in place? It's just the corporate ownership is changing to a new company?
That's correct, yes.
I have no issues with that idea.
I'll entertain a motion if there's any other discussion.
Madam Chair, I'll motion to the Board of Selectmen, acting as licensing commissioners, approve the request of Bertucci's Restaurants LLC to transfer and pledge all of the alcohol license at both 35 Andover Street.
Second.
Any more discussion?
So, this means that in this case, this, because they're not changing the manager, it's, they're the same steward. They're the person that's still going to be in charge. There's going to be no pickup, okay?
Correct, correct. Staff, it's all, all the same.
Okay, yeah. The court, living through this, two companies, the court really sets the rules. They drive it. Matter of fact, the oversight's pretty, generally, pretty intense, so... I'll...
We already made the motion.
Motion, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, and one-day liquor licenses for Merrimack College. And we are hoping, and the, at our next meeting, we'll get more of the insight to the proposal for licensing next year, but we still have our process. So, Merrimack has requested a group of licenses, and in our packet, you see, we've got the sign-offs here. Graham Rowe did make some recommendations regarding the facility itself, but all following our process. Are there any good questions anybody has to these one-day licenses?
There's only one, right?
There's only one.
One, events to be held. I'm looking at nine, oh, you know what? I'm sorry, wrong. We've got so many of them over there. Thank you, yes, just the one. Continued from, so, do I hear motion?
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen, acting as licensing commissioners, approve the request of Paul Galant at Merrimack College for a one-day wine and malt license for athletic concessions at the Merrimack Athletic Complex on January 5, 2019, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to leave licensing?
Motion to move out of licensing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, out of licensing.
Okay, the next item is governmental report. First up, we have our five-year financial forecast.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, as we have done every year, certainly for the last seven and to some degree prior to that, this is the time of the year where we provide a five-year financial forecast. We typically do that after two major events. The first is a strategic planning session of the Board of Selectmen, which we conducted in an interesting fashion this year, given what we were going through. And two, after the revenue and fixed cost review committee has an opportunity to review the revenue estimates for the upcoming fiscal year. They've done that. For those of you who don't know, two members of the Finance Committee, two members of the school staff, and Lynn Savage, Finance Director, sit in a room and talk about sort of what's available for the upcoming year, and they do a good job of estimating what is available for next year. Ultimately, most of the decisions we made, make are around that discretionary spending from one fiscal year to the next. And so, that's the jumping-off point as they make a recommendation back to me in terms of looking at fiscal, in this case fiscal '20, and trying to understand what the future looks like. So, this is really small print. It just means that everything that we show in our budget calendar, which is printed online, is reprinted here. It shows the timeline to get us from the strategic planning session way back, typically in September, October, all the way through town meeting this year, and every year in May, and this year it's on May 14th. And all of the steps in between that we take to get that. There is no deviation from the process reviews in the past. Somewhere in the next, some number of weeks, I'm going to provide you with a draft of five-year capital plan. The board will then review that capital plan, forward it off to the Finance Committee. That starts the first phase, which is a review of the five-year capital plan. I will foreshadow, and you'll see in this document, that it's my recommendation we proceed with Facility Master Plan Two, and that the emphasis, the front emphasis of that be the three elementary projects that were in the needs assessment that came in at the time that we decided to proceed with the Anne Bradstreet Early Elementary, Early Childhood Center, if I have that right, ABBCC. And so, that's the foreshadowing, we'll come up with that document. The Finance Committee then and I go over that document, hopefully to approval. And then we move on next to deliver to this board a draft budget for fiscal 2020. And so, all this detail means that's the process we've historically followed and will follow again this year. It's always important to identify the mission and vision of North Andover, certainly as it relates to the community and in the broader sense, how we view the community and our interaction with the community. Most important, our terms identified in this document and underlined that we deliver a service which is professional, cost-effective, prompt, courteous, and equitable. And ultimately, we're shooting to have the highest level of integrity possible in municipal government. From a vision perspective, we're looking for the common good, what benefits the whole community whenever possible. And I think we've done a fantastic job over the years of doing that. Ultimately, what's gotten us here is some core financial principles centered around the idea of planning and thoughtfulness. The idea that we look into the future, that we don't spend dollars today that we can't sustain for tomorrow, and that we commit every day to making sure that we have sustainable growth. It allowed us to turn a corner seven years ago and sort of right the ship and move to a AAA bond rating. And each year after that has allowed us to add services as the economy has gotten stronger. I think we've been effective at that. I think ultimately, what I most concern myself with is making sure we don't fall off that path, that we don't get too excited about where we are, that in the long term, not everything can be done in one year, but certainly, almost everything is possible as long as we manage expectations about when it's possible. So, we're going to manage the cost for employee benefits. This will be in this slide for a long period of time. It is typically the most expensive of our costs and one most subject to change. We're trying to improve strategic partnerships. I think what we've learned over the last couple of months is relationships with neighboring communities and the opportunity to work with those folks in the long term, not just during disasters and tragedies, but in other circumstance, helps us be a stronger community and provide more efficient services. I think internally, our relationship, certainly my relationship with the board, which I appreciate, this board's relationship with the school committee and our relationship with the Finance Committee and the school superintendent have all been major assets in making sure that we can accomplish things. I think we've seen the experience of fighting with one another and what that means. It's not only divisive on a sort of meeting-to-meeting perspective and a cordiality perspective, but it means that we can't accomplish what we want to in terms of long-term strategic goals. And I think our greatest strength is the fact that we've worked so well together over the last decade or so. We'll continue to upgrade our infrastructure. It's important, we want our community to be, we don't want to look back 10 years from now and find out that we're catching up. I think Facility Master Plan One was a little bit of a catch-up effort. That happens, the economy prior to that was, was poor. And I think to look at Facility Master Plan Two, constant investment in our roads, our desire to want to commit to a connectivity plan on the sidewalks, a regular investment in technology in school and town are all examples of how the infrastructure, however you define it, are supported across the board. We need to always try to find new ways, new streams of revenues. You know, they're traditionally incremental. There's not one sort of million-dollar payday that's going to come in each and every year. But we do try to find ways each year to improve revenues to make sure that we remain more sustainable. We have continued to look at that service as an important factor in terms of managing our budgets. We've often commented about the fact that the enterprise funds success over the last half a dozen or so years, the fact that we have not raised water and sewer rates for more than a half a dozen years, as Smidely identified as it relates to the taxes. The same now can be said for water and sewer. And our ability to do that really has been around managing that service, and that remains an important component of what we do. Technology has been a focus for some period of time. We're fortunate to have a school technology director and a town technology director and their staffs, which are extraordinary. We now assume technology, where before we sort of chased technology. Now, we assume it's a part of what we do every day, and I think that'll continue[1787.24] part of what we do every day, and I think that'll continue to be the case for some period of time. So here are the assumptions as it relates to the financial forecast, as it relates on the revenue side of the equation, tax levy increases by two and a half percent, that's not something new and exciting, that's something that's been in place since the early 1980s. We have seen new growth start to tick up as some of these larger-scale developments have come on board, it's one of those categories, the Revenue Fixed Cost Review Committee, Lynn Savage and I agree, we need to remain conservative about, because new growth is something that, if you get too far ahead of it, or predict when the building permits are going to become, excuse me, come forward, that can be a little risky proposition, but we are seeing new growth in some of the years actually crossing a million dollars. The debt exclusion figures are actual based on the debt schedule, as you know from the information you have provided, is to set the tax, the residential factor, there's been a significant decline of more than $1.2 million attributable to Thompson Middle School and Osgood Hill retiring debt, that's important, we think currently have a little over a half a million dollars in excluded debt, that number will continue to trickle down, but not at the levels that it did this year. Local receipts largely driven by motor vehicle revenue, that's our largest local receipt, is assumed to increase by 3.8% in fiscal '20 and 3% annually thereafter. Fiscal '20 increase mostly attributable, again, to the motor vehicle excise tax. If you may recall that we shifted the Medicare reimbursement as a permanent source of revenue into a curriculum fund for the schools, something that has worked extremely well, and we're like sure that we're investing in the kind of in-classroom technology and hot assets in terms of curriculum for years to come. It looks like that figure will grow to close to a half a million dollars a year in investment in our education, and I think that's one of those creative solutions that we all came up with, and something that's paying dividends in the long term. We don't get too crazy about what we think state aid is going to be, the state won't reveal its budget until typically last week in January, excuse me, and this is a reelection year, so it does have slightly longer to release the budget, I still expect it to be somewhere near the end of January. What we do is we assume the current fiscal year state-adopted budget is going to be the figure moving into next year, so that's how we make sure that we're conservative about our estimate on state aid moving forward. Operating transfers, these typically come from enterprise funds and other areas, and they historically grow at about two and a half percent per year. This exciting graph shows where the revenue is allocated, as you can see, the tax levy represents, and has historically represented somewhere between, you know, 76 and 70% of, 77% of all revenue, that has been the case for some period of time, and at one point it peaked out at 77%, we've seen that decline slightly as tax revenue grows, but other revenue sources have slowly beginning to grow, and maybe in the long term, we see that go down by one or two percentage points in the long term. As it relates to expenses, health insurance is assumed to increase by 7% for fiscal '20, 7% for '21, '22, and 7.5% for '23 through '24. We've been fortunate that those rates have historically been more like 5%, and for the period before we moved to GIC, the average increase was 10 to 12%. So again, moving to the GIC has been a cost saver for us, it has affected in a positive way the OPEB liability, but certainly has impacted in a positive way our expenses. Other benefits that we're concerned about, retirement, of course, is a large bill here, it's a significant portion of our expenses, our second largest single expense, non-departmental expense, it's expected off the most recent actuary report to increase by 6.9% in fiscal 2020, and 8% from '21 and '22, and 8.5% for the following two fiscal years. Eventually, you'll see that number chill down closer to 4% as we get closer to the end of the funding schedule. The positive stock market performance was helpful in this regard, every two years they do an actuary, their bogey is about, used to be 8.5%, I think they've lowered that now to about an eight or seven, 7.5%, and every time the stock market on an average over an annual basis performs, outperforms that benchmark, it's good in terms of driving down the unfunded liability and ultimately, the cost on our budget. The debt service figures in this projection are the actual based on not only the current debt, but are the assumptions going forward, including the five-year capital plan that you're going to see shortly. General government spending is assumed to increase by two and a half percent, we've been very good at keeping general government spending at or below 3% on a regular basis, and still been able to incrementally increase services. Support services, which typically are those common areas, technology and the like, are projected to increase by about two and a half percent for fiscal '20 as well, 3% annually in the following years, the school department expenses are assumed to increase for 3.75% for fiscal '20, and 3.5% for each fiscal '24 through, excuse me, '21 through '24. State assessments of those charges that the state bills us for, including an MBTA charge, mosquito control, and that laundry list of other things that people don't realize the state bills us for, they net our state aid by these assessments, we're assuming those state assessments will go up by 4% in fiscal '20, and 5% annually thereafter. Most of the times when we get to the larger budgets, public works and public safety, we see that they increase on average faster than our support services and our general government, and we're assuming that those will increase by approximately 3% between now and 2024. So what does all that mean, if you can see this on the chart? We'll see if we can make it a little larger. Here we go. What it means is that with the assumptions that you've, that have just identified, we should assume that we still have to close a gap in the fiscal '20 budget of $285,000. So between different revenue assumptions and different expenditure assumptions, getting closer to reality in terms of the budget, our goal will be between now and the end of, above mid-January actually, that we'll take that number and it will be no, no less than zero, and hopefully slightly north of that. It's pretty common about this point, we are typically a couple hundred thousand underbalanced based on these assumptions, and we use the opportunity of the timing of what's going to happen in the next couple of months to close that gap. As has been the regular sort of way this information is presented, excuse me, that deficit continues to increase as we get to our years, I think you're all used to that by now, shouldn't be much of a surprise, each and every year we find a way to close that gap, but as you can imagine on a forecast, we want to make sure that every year we travel away from the current timeframe, we want to be more conservative about revenue estimates and our expense costs. We want to make sure that we have time to manage those outliers and those unusual circumstances. So, that $3 million deficit in fiscal '24 at this point should not be alarming to anyone, it means we should be able to have time to figure out the right way to balance all the budget by the time we get there. But again, I know you folks have seen this document, as have members of the Finance Committee and School Committee and others, this is, this is not an uncommon place for us to be at this point in time. As it relates to the expenditures, these are the most common categories, schools at dead-on 50%, health represents 12%, health and public safety, interesting enough, have equal percents of the budget, so public safety being police fire and emergency management, health has an equal percentage of that. Support services and general government only constitute a total of 7% of all of the spending, our debt service is at a modest 5%, surely helps us with the rating agencies as well, all the personnel costs at a 7%, and public works is at 5%. So this just gives you a sense of the retirement appropriation and the cost over the next seven or so fiscal years, and you can see that we're approaching $6 million for fiscal 2020, and that number continues to climb year after year, if you're looking at 7% increases and 8% increases, you can see how this is going to become an increasing, increasingly greater percentage of overall spending, and it's something, of course, that we should always be concerned with along with health insurance. Now, we produced this slide, I've been producing it for a couple of years, and will continue to produce, because I think it shows the picture of the change that was made when we were self-insured under Blue Cross, that went to the GIC under a premium-based product. The continued increase of health insurance compared to the historical increase when we were self-insured is so dramatic that the delta over the period from now, dating back from fiscal '15 through fiscal '25, will end up resulting in $15.7 million in avoided costs, and therefore, a corresponding impact on OPEB because our health insurance costs are lower. So this shows a little bit of what we juggle in a particular area, those things we'd like to add to the conversation and the challenges we have, it includes employee benefits as a challenge, OPEB as a challenge, opportunities in areas like the energy conservation, which we're moving for aggressively, opportunities that we're trying to seek and have been successful in implementing like reduction in classroom size, our increased commitment to make sure that more of our capital plan is pay-as-you-go and not all off debt service, that Lynn Savage has coordinated a long and arduous transition to a new financial series of financial packages that has taken a period of time, and I know that David identified that as well, but it's been, as you can imagine, it's been a challenge integrating all that software, and Lynn Savage has successfully coordinated that, and we appreciate it. We're looking forward to Facility Master Plan Two as we move forward, and again, looking at all these items, trying to juggle all of these, we really hope that right in the center there, that snow and ice deficit, that this is, we get one break a year where we're not dealing with that, we've had a couple of bad years in a row, so we're...
No, so far it's just been a rain and a big cloud.
Rain's good. I was complaining about the rain today, but I will not complain if it continues through April. I think we'll do it through the end. Slide provided by the School Department as part of their goal, their goal has been to drop, this slide shows the percentage of elementary classrooms over class-size goal, and you see that it peaked out at about 53% in 2012, '13, and has steadily declined to the point that through 2019, 2020, we're going to be as low as 7.9%, only 7.9% of the classrooms, elementary classrooms will be above the class-size goal.
Do you anticipate we'll be able to continue as a town to work with the School Department to keep them moving in that direction?
Yes, we continue to have our weekly meetings with the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, I think, by the way, Superintendent Gilligan has done a fantastic job, transitions extraordinarily well, as everybody could imagine, given the nature of the person, the person he is, we continue to work well together, we've talked about his goals, my goals, the joint goals of the community, and I feel very confident that we'll continue to strive to meeting those goals over a period of time. I think he has some, in addition to those things that the School Committee is committed to, has some interests as well in other areas of education, that's just elementary, and I think that'll be demonstrated when he releases his budget later this year, and I'm fully confident that we will go into this town meeting with, once again, a consensus budget which meets our common goals.
Especially considering, not only, you know, the opening of the building and the school buildings, but also your involvement with this gas crisis too, you know, taking care of kids that are going through...
Yes, it's very complicated.
It was a tough, tough way to take on the new job, and as you said, he's performed so admirably.
He's done a great job.
Yeah.
Yep. So these are no, this is a partial list, of course, but a new and ongoing initiatives, the reduction of average classroom size, we've talked about that, but that's ongoing. Recommend budget for programs and initiatives to improve progress, this is all sort of school-related, I wish I knew what all those terms mean, but I trust the Superintendent and others to know what those terms mean. We're in the process of retrofitting all the town on street lights LED, that process is underway, we begin implementing smart technology, community technology whenever possible, we continue to see data and our ability to capture data at the center of our ability to become more efficient. We believe that in the long term, we will be above, ahead of the curve in terms of being able to explain why we're spending dollars in certain areas and allocating resources to those areas that most need it, we believe that that's what the future holds, and we're well-positioned to deal with that, given our focus as an agency. It's one of my favorites, you can have anything you want, you just can't have everything you want. This isn't Parenting 101.
I was going to say this.
It is not, it is not Parenting 101, and for those adults, I do not want them to leave the impression that I'm giving you Parenting 101, but this is, this is my version of Parenting 101 in the context of budgets, and so, I think you've all heard me say this in one form or another. We can have everything, we just can't have it all at once, right? And I think, in fairness, over the last five, six, seven years, we've proven we can have everything, we've just, we've also proven we can't have it all at once. So we have a lot yet to do, and we feel confident we can get it done, as long as we don't get too excited of thinking it all can happen in one day. Okay, that's my lecture for the day, I'll move on to other things.
Thanks, Dave.
So the things that are in our future, our new senior center, we've started that process, we'll be giving the Board an update on that, we've hired an architect, an OPM, we've met with the property owner that we're working in concert with, who by the way, has secured another parcel on that site to make all the property fit, and we think in more appropriate fashion, there'll be a planning board review of that particular process, and so we're going to begin the land use process. We do feel comfortable, late spring, we go out to bid, somewhere, if I call late spring, you know, into May, it's certainly the case, we're probably a month or six weeks behind, that's overall, not bad, in terms of where we stand, and we're feeling good about that as we move forward. The reduction of an average classroom size, we've talked about that, the LED retrofit. The OPEB funding, I know the Committee and I are working on a plan, I think one thing that'll be evident to the public when we release that plan, is there are steps the town has already been taking, things that we don't make a lot about, a lot of, we don't make a lot about, we don't jump up and down and say, here are the things we're doing, but the town has been taking steps for several years, quite frankly, to try to manage this cost, and I think there could be future steps, and I'm sure the Committee will be recommending some of those future steps to the Board. Here's a little bit of a foreshadowing on the capital plan, as we roll out Facility Master Plan Two, you should expect that we're going to fund the consultant to sort of really refine what we expect in Facility Master Plan Two. Remember on Facility Master Plan One, we started about, I think, two years before I arrived, the Committee had been formed, they had done some really meaningful work, town meeting had supported the funding, the Board had supported them, what really we needed to sort of get off the road is how do we fund it, and what's the order of projects? A little bit different with Facility Master Plan Two, since we've done so much work in Facility Master Plan One, covering seven buildings, the number of moving parts in Facility Plan Two is just a smaller number of moving parts, right? So we're talking about Fire Station Two, we'll have to in the long term look at Library and Youth Center to see what the needs are there as well, and so, but this is giving you a foreshadowing of sort of the front end of what Facility Master Plan Two looks like. The order here is there for a reason, that's the order agreed to by the School Committee and the Superintendent at the time when the Anne Bradstreet was approved, and so, the order in terms of how they appear on this page is not arbitrary in any way, it is something that was pre-discussed with the School Superintendent. We also have underway the recreation complex, we're moving closer to that process as well, that will also need site plan review by the Planning Board, and an expectation that they will go in January to do that site plan review. See a little bit of what's taking shape there, not that we've gone out to bid, there's a parking lot being installed currently right off of Chickering, that's right along near the new Anne Bradstreet, that really is part of the recreation complex, but we decided to construct it early to make sure we had a sufficient parking for the Anne Bradstreet, so it accomplishes both at the same time. So, we're making great progress on the recreation complex, we're going to come to the Board with the sort of final, 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 final plans, that I know have been the subject of 25-plus public meetings, which is great, he numbers them, thank God, it's been the most visited and spoken about project in the towns certainly the last 20 years, but just, just at the point he's ready to go to the Planning Board, I think we've decided let him go to the Planning Board, and therefore, if there's any feedback, what you will see is post-Planning Board, rather than having him come in, and if the Planning Board tweaks anything in the end. So, I'd expect in the month of January, you will see that final plan, it is likely to go out to bid at the end of February, bid awarding in March, and construction to begin sometime in April, May at the latest. And we're going to work through the end of the calendar year, take a break over the winter likely, and come back in the spring and go again, so, again, it's all one phase, but there'll be some construction interruption around the winter. Okay? We'll talk about phasing when we arrive next. We are, excuse me, still working on the sidewalk connectivity plan, or it's something that's important to the Board and certainly important to the entire community, and from that, what I'm foreshadowing is your capital plan, we'll see a dramatic increase in sidewalk funding. So we've historically put $75,000 into the capital plan, the capital plan that you'll see from me in the next couple of weeks, we'll have put $250,000 in year one, $250,000 in year two, $350,000, $350,000, $500,000. So, as opposed to a number that looks like $375,000 over five years, you're going to look at a number that's north of $1.5 million over the same period, as we start to invest in our sidewalks and make our community a more walkable place. So it's a major initiative, some of the Board has really emphasized, I, all I say is relates back to the last quote, we're focused on it, you can't put every sidewalk in in one year, this is probably a $20 million sidewalk initiative, and so, it's going to take some time, but the community should realize that we're focused on it.
What about the trees that go inside, when you talked about?
There'll be, that's a great, good segue, in the budget, which we haven't seen yet, the budget will have a tree replacement plan, rolled out as part of the budget, the funding for that tree replacement plan will not be a capital item, but will be a budget area item.
And not to all go in the commons?
No, none will be common directed.
Because I think we're commoned out with trees.
Yep, I was not part of the common plant on trees, but I know there was one, and as I understand it, every one of those trees was planted. This is about a tree replacement and street tree program for streets and neighborhoods, that's what it's about, and so, that'll be in the fiscal 2020 budget proposal when it gets out in mid-January. So this is the only thing that I've ever said that sounds like it's worth repeating?
[laughing]
So I'm just going to repeat it every year, at least I feel this way about that, just because our current looks better than our past, doesn't mean that our future is still not dependent on the decisions we make today. And I think as long as we do this, we will make sure that that plan is thoughtful and represents the long-term interests of the community, and make sure that we leave the community better off than we found it, which is always our goal, and I think we're certainly in a position to do that. Any questions?
Exciting, there's something to look forward to after the holidays.
That's great.
And then some.
The only thing that I would like to add that it's in there but not specifically is, all part of the OPEB is what we talked about before, that every time that we have a new hire, that we need to take a look at what will this cost us 10, 20 years from now, just to help, you know, make sure we really need that position as a way of keeping track of our money in the future if it goes towards this, so, that's all. And I know that other people have expressed interest in it as well. Any other questions, more comments?
Good job.
Okay. Move on to gas, let's go take a breath and then...
My cough is affecting. If I, while we're, just before we segue to gas, I can jam in there, we had been talking for more than two years about allowing for municipal aggregation, it first came up as a conversation, I think, in fiscal 15, some residents had approached us, they were getting calls at home from private electric suppliers, their concern was, can we trust them? We found the solution to that, which was go to town meeting, first come to this board and then go to town meeting, and get town meeting approval on municipal aggregation, which in essence means, your electric supplier is still National Grid, the bid looks the same, excuse me, the bill looks the same, the 1-800 number is the same, the people who show up at your house is the same, but in the back half of that bill, the supply of electricity is provided by someone other than N-Grid. N-Grid is agnostic to this kind of decision, they make, they're not allowed to make any profit on the supply of electricity, so they don't care if it's them providing it or someone else providing it. So, we received that approval at the town meeting in 2016, I believe, we have continued through a process, Department of Public Utility process for nearly a year, we get final approvals on that, we did that as well. We went out to bid, as you may recall, probably nine months, three years ago, the first time we went out to bid, the bids only represented a very minor savings and therefore chose not to move forward with the aggregation, and as the board remembers, we can do this in increments, we're not switching for life, we're switching really for convenience and cost, the ability to go to another provider, provide a short-term benefit to our rate payers, to our residents, and then if the rate is no longer in our favor, we can switch back to the National Grid basic supply rate. We can enter into these agreements from six months to three years, obviously the six month being the most concerning. So more recently, we went out to bid again, the six-month rate was cheaper than National Grid's basic service rate, the basic supply, but we decided to take advantage of that, we're actually able to offer a all-green alternative, which is still cheaper, total residential choice, you can either go with the non-green version or the green version, you pick, but in either case, you save on your electricity bill. And as a result of that, every customer of National Grid was delivered a letter, in addition to communications who were put out through our normal channels, they all should have received the letter, it communicates all this. We have very little influence on that letter, it's a DPU-crafted letter with our seal on it, I know because I've asked and said, can we change a few things, and there's not a lot of that that goes on, because DPU wants to make sure that the customer is in. As a result of that, in addition to other channels that we've used to communicate that, residents are getting that letter or finding out about this, I know some have questions, it's real, some people are concerned that it's sort of fiction and coming from another company, we're fielding those calls and trying to address those calls as we can. The rate that was approved is a rate for only six months, residents can choose to stay with N-Grid on the, that one line item on their bill, some people think that the whole bill is going to change, a new company's coming into town, none of that's happening. But if they choose to stay with National Grid, they have to actually opt out of the program, because if you remember, as part of the aggregation, we all had to agree to opt in, and so if you're an outlier and just decide you'd rather pay more and stay with N-Grid, that's your choice, you have to opt out of this program, and they've been given a card to do that.
What if they were with a different supplier, not N-Grid, but some other?
They would not be eligible for the program, because they're under contract with the private supplier.
But if they can somehow get out of that on their own, that's up to them.
I think they would have a chance to do that, but in most cases, that's what we're found with, it's not happening with us, but with others, there can be fees and costs associated with that, and more often not, residents go with that, you know, they're sold on a rate, not throwing all the companies under the bus, but they're sold on this great rate, and the great rate is linked to the fact that it's multiple years. When you need to know about utility rates, is they go down and up even seasonally, there's two rate-setting periods in any one year, and so during the higher use periods, supply and demand, the rate goes up, and the rates go down during less peak periods, and so it may look really great because they timed the bid to be advantageous to the higher-rate season, but as it becomes lower rates, they're still paying that higher rate. So, from our perspective, we took a very conservative look at this first time through, when only with the six-month rate, and during that six-month period is unequivocal, our rate will be lower than the National Grid rate, and then we'll reevaluate that after six months and decide whether or not it makes sense to us to move forward. You do not have to, every time, we can just stay with N-Grid. So we wanted the public to be aware of that, because I know that that's ongoing. It's utility, but it's not gas, so let's talk about gas. So we're, as of today, we're 93% relit, I think, in terms of hard numbers to understand what's happening now, it's really important, I think, to happen, understand what's happening now. There are 350 of all the meters, or about 350 meters at this point, excuse me, 350 meters which they haven't gotten to are somehow reconnected, it's a really small pool, now counting appliances, 350 meters, no, total.
Total.
Total, yep. 34 of those are specific to Columbia Grid, meaning people that have chosen to use Columbia Grid as a resource, and they haven't completed, but those are expected to be complete in the next, as you can imagine, 34, not a lot of heavy lift. The remaining represent what we call self-mitigators, learning all these terms that we've created over the time, and self-mitigators are folks that went through the claims process, have chosen their own plumber, or their own appliance provider, and have decided to do the work with the help of that particular contract. We are finding at this point, although early on, I would have said to you that self-mitigators were moving faster, as those plumbers have gotten really busy, as you can imagine, self-mitigators are actually, and the plumbing contractors provided by Columbia rose sharply to over 900, with those going up and schedules of plumbers getting longer, the self-mitigators are the majority of what is left. In North Endover as an example, there are, there are 88 self-mitigators, and less than a handful of folks that need to be relit by Columbia Gas, so...
The numbers that are, that you're talking about, are some of those because the owners by choice, or because the property is not ready to be lit, is that included?
No, subtractive from the list would be, so there are 17, I believe, there with me off the top of my head, approximately 17 properties which are damaged sufficiently enough that they wouldn't be in the mode of relighting, so those are sort of scrubbed out of this base number, because obviously they're on completely different schedules. So this is the properties that could be relit, this is what's left of that particular group. And what we're finding, and it's been an interesting process, is that there can be any number of stories, as you get, as the pool shrinks, everything from folks going out of town from six to eight weeks, and they're not going to come back, some folks just will not call Columbia Gas, they just, they're getting calls, they've decided not to go through a claims process, they've chosen not to self-mitigate, but they're just having difficulty contacting. We've worked with the company, we've sent teams, individual houses, we've sort of divided up this complicated list, gone to people's houses to find on the status, because we know they trust us more than they may trust Columbia. In some cases, they're on a path to self-mitigation, and they're going to be relit next week, they just don't feel like calling Columbia Gas and telling them, and that's all fine, right? But we're coming down to that sort of more narrow list, we're dealing with 88 self-mitigating North Endover households that we're working on the way through, that's a total of about 1,900 dwellings from the beginning. So you can see why, in all sincerity, the project is substantially complete, because every one of these individual items, not every one of them, but there is a lot of individual backstories to every one of them.
So the ones that are not relit are kind of exceptions?
They are, except, they are, you're doing it on their own, the plumber's going to be there December 16th, and it's December whatever it is, and therefore, it's not complete, but in fairness, from the beginning, we've pushed Columbia Gas, I think you heard at the hearing, they wanted guarantees of when things are going to be done, in fairness, Columbia Gas, as relates to this, there's a lot of things that we won't be as fair with them about, we can't ask them to complete someone's work who doesn't want them to complete the work, and then count them and say, how come you haven't relit that? So of the properties that they're responsible for, they are substantially complete, they are less than a handful of North Endover complete. As relates to businesses...
You said less than, it's less than five?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
So they'll be completely...
The ones that they're responsible for, they will be complete.
Right, the ones that they can do will be...
Yep.
What's the breakdown of how many of those houses they have to go back to, because they're simply repaired furnaces versus the new furnaces?
Well, this is completely, sort of, two different discussions, what I'll do is I'll phase them, as to phase one and phase two. What we're finding is, interesting enough, is a sort of subplot to that, at the time we were having conversations about what to do next, when we were going to abandon the November 19th All Is Good Plan, and go to an alternative plan which really leaned on a date of December 16th, there was a decision, or a discussion around the fact that they felt that they could repair a substantial amount of those. In fact, the number in the meetings was somewhere between 60 and 70%, some would say they heard 50 to 70%, I know I heard 60 to 70%. As they've gone individual homes, the data reflects the fact that, in fact, they are repairing, excuse me, replacing all but 18% of the homes.
They are replacing?
They're replacing, the overall data for the plan to date is that, even though they expected to repair 60 to 70%,
Temporarily.
And all but 18% of the cases to date, they have replaced, and so it's the exact opposite. So someone say, geez, well then how could they have made the sort of traction from where they were coming from? And I would say there's a number of factors. They dramatically increased the plumbers to over 900, at the time the conversation was going on, it was 200, 300. They changed the nature of the contracts to be performance-based contracts, from just hourly wage contracts, huge factor. The longer the crew comes in from Kentucky and spends in North Endover, the more they know about individual houses, the more they know about how things happen in those basements, and the more efficient they become. So, the sort of learning curve, starting to flatten out, the fact that the contracts were changed, the increase in the number of plumbers, all worked favorably to offset the fact that the original thought was that what they would come back to do in the spring could represent up to 70% of all of the meters, the work behind the meters. That number, as of the last report, has stayed really steady, it's 18%. So the amount of spring work in homes will be dramatically lower than originally anticipated, which is good, because I really think they would have struggled trying to do 70%, even in the spring, to try to plan that and coordinate that, it's a lot of work. So most of that work is being done as replacements and not repairs, in most cases. Yep, 82% of the time, and that's really helped as relates to that.
Yeah, I think just replacement versus repair, students waiting for parts, it just drags it on, they're probably just better just getting it done, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, that's why they thought the repair would be a faster alternative, is that you just, you know, you change a valve, and they had a good sense of that, because the repair model was used, I believe, in Sandy and a few other larger disasters. Here, they were finding, when they got there, that given the body of work they had to do, they just did it all, they just infused that much more labor into the equation, I mean, at one point, you're talking about 900 plumbers, you know, which is, that's a lot of plumbers.
That's a lot of plumbers.
Right? And you'll see in the daily briefings that get put out, there, the number of staffing is starting to decline, you're seeing this sort of transition. What we're aggressively working with Columbia on is identifying the sort of pool of remaining folks, to see if we at least can have a conversation, make sure there's a conversation going on, so they can get more definitive about when those relights are. I don't expect that those relights are far off, quite frankly, other than a really unusual case. There are some cases where bumped into foreclosures, in some cases, been a transfer of real estate that's caused some communication delays, in some cases, their own data was bad, so there's a lot of sort of nuanced cases in this. I would expect over the next two weeks, that number here in North Endover will decline. As it relates to businesses, we're almost all the way back up, there's a couple of self-mitigation, those not self-mitigating, 100%, those who Columbia Gas dealt with are 100% all set, with one of those businesses waiting on an inspection, and every other business is now operating. So of 155, those are all set, of the self-mitigations, there are three left, and one happens to be someone who's decided to take the opportunity to do major wholesale improvements, so that's sort of off the schedule, the other two to do would be related within two weeks. So on the business side of 155 customers, commercial customers impacted, 100% of the Columbia Gas group, which was most of them, are up and running, or will be up and running by tomorrow, is the last one that's waiting for the inspection. Of the self-mitigators, only two remain, and both those are expected to be up within seven days, so the business community is basically up and running. The second piece to that, of the appliances, there's really interesting appliance data out there, they had to install, you know, 6,000 plus, get into over 6,800 homes to put in appliances, you remember, this rapid relight meant I'm focusing on the hot water heater and the boiler, and the appliances are coming next. As we've gotten to this sort of point that the, we're only making incremental difference as relates to the households, they've shifted those resources onto the appliance side, and they're hitting 400 homes a day on the appliance side, from the data I see, they're two, three, four days a week, and they're putting in, they're down to 1,000, doing 400 a day. So they're going to a house, putting into, they have that many crews, focused on appliance replacements. Again, we've got some self-mitigators in there, people have specialized equipment, they take a while to come, but this isn't about work that has to be done on a house, this is typically about, are they waiting on an appliance? So I would expect, certainly before the end of the week, that the appliance side will also be substantially complete. So that's the summary in Columbia Gas, the core of the conversations right now are not just this, it's swinging to phase two, and phase two is, who's going to be left, what does the old structure look like, are they going to make sure they maintain a presence to continue these things, are there someone to answer the phone when your appliance or your boiler doesn't work in the middle of the winter that you just installed, who's fixing Rogan's Field, who's repaving the streets? So the conversations haven't gotten lighter, they've just changed, and we haven't reached sort of full mass on that yet, but I would expect that within less than two weeks from now, all of that fairly intense conversation will come to a head, with all of that data being available.
So I've been reading and hearing about on social media and other things about leaks here and there.
Yeah.
Obviously, I would assume some leaks would happen, it's just going to happen, but...
Sure.
Do you have any data or insights as to the number and the magnitude of them, if they're...
So some of that jumped off of the...
Are they addressing that in a proactive way, or it's just all reactive, I mean, any, any commentary on the leaks?
Sure. So we had a failure major incident today, which was a carbon monoxide leak. It wasn't a leak, it was a carbon monoxide detector went off, people called 911, the response was perfectly appropriate, I can tell you the conversation is still ongoing, Columbia Gas representatives, our fire department, our building department, our inspectional service department and others, spent some time in that basement today trying to figure out exactly what went on. I think there's still more to come as it relates to that, and I, and I don't want to get into the details without all the details, but the process worked, one, there was a carbon monoxide detector, so in each and every install, there was supposed to be a carbon monoxide detector installed, if there wasn't already one in there, you see me putting out there on social media today, I think it's a good reminder for everybody, whether they're in the impacted area or not, get your carbon monoxide detectors in, check them, put in your, your smoke detectors as well, that's what sort of jumpedstart today. I would say there's been sub-five of anything that I've been made aware of as it relates to carbon monoxide, and none to the extent that today was, like, none to that extent. Carbon monoxide detector's been off, someone's arrived to check what the levels are, the levels are, you know, whatever, but not, not unreasonable, or not, not anything that can't be directly attributable to something. But there's been, so, I'm aware of three, but there could have been five, I'm just sort of racking my brain a little, but it's not been a common situation, just has not, either as it relates to calls, because the alarms are going off, or just because, people on failing poles as an example. So I think that one was addressed well today, there's more to follow on that, I think we, I think people need to get all the information, they can't understand why that one occurred, because quite frankly, compared to the sort of less than handful of others we've heard of, this one was more extreme, and we should know about, right? To see if it is a trend. As it relates to gas, they installed 45 miles of gas main, a service connection to every single household, and there's certainly, I'm aware of, you know, half a dozen or so cases where there's a whiff of gas, they didn't put the valve in right, there's a connection issue, they themselves go as part of a precautionary issue, after they install all the gas main, and they check with their own detectors to see if there's any minor leaks in the road, they've dug up in a few spots throughout the three communities, double-checked, all the things you'd expect. Again, nothing extraordinary, given, you know, you're dealing with 7,000 sort of meters throughout the entire area, I haven't seen data in North Endover, quite frankly... I haven't seen data in North Andover, quite frankly, in either of the other communities. Do we get more calls because people smell gas? You better believe we get more calls. And some of those are in the impacted area, some of those are not. And I'm glad people call, they should call. Call. If you're uncomfortable, you feel uncomfortable about something, then call. But certainly, we have seen some cases where the work wasn't done quite right, and they've had to go back. And they've worked on that until we're comfortable with the repair, or the homeowner's comfortable with the repair. But we're not seeing a volume or a quantity that makes us concerned that this is anything other than doing this much work and expecting that some percentage of that work would not be perfect. That's where we're at. On Saturday is an open house. That's a good opportunity for those folks who are not relit, there's another open house happening. That sort of Q&amp;A session that we've done, one at the senior center and one at the high school, there's another one back at the senior center, a Q&amp;A session at the beginning that allows folks to sort of ask questions. I think it's a good opportunity for the landlord and tenant folks who, you know, special circumstances associated with those. Tenants do not have to pay or did not have to pay rent while they were without heat and hot water. Columbia Gas committed to paying the landlords for the lost rent, and quite frankly, if the tenant, out of their goodwill, paid the landlord, then those dollars are going back to the landlord so they can reimburse the tenant. So there's been some information online about the tenant landlord thing, but it's a good opportunity for folks to talk about that and probably start to talk or ask questions about what the spring looks like with phase two.
Lot of information?
Yes.
Can we get a report on how successful our small business Saturday was?
Yes, we don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
Because the ladies to my right are so overwhelmed and probably shooting me for the...
How many claims have you got so far, Megan?
So at present, we have processed over 540 coming in, we're probably getting an average of probably about 50 at today now. So we're actually ordering the first round of cards tomorrow, which will be a total of about $62,600 in cards that will be mailed out. So that equates, you know, if you just double that, you're at, you know, a little over $120,000 that was spent that day. However, you know, we literally had to verify each receipt, and so the spending was far more than that because people would spend just under sort of meeting that next threshold. And, and so, you know, we would conservatively estimate at present that it's about $150,000 that has been spent. We will go back once we get all the gift cards out and do a tally so we have that exact number. But it's been really a tremendous success, and we're gearing up for another promotion.
That's why I asked. I thought, that was my lead-in to ask you that.
Our anticipated date is December 15th. We're not quite ready to release that, but I think by the end of this week, we will have that prepared to send out.
The word is kind of seeping out that another one might...
We'll put it on social media so it's...
So it would just be the 15th?
It would just be one day only.
Yeah, one day.
Yeah, the Sunday thing probably didn't work for most of the merchants.
Well, a lot of the...
It's the 15th, the Sunday, maybe.
What we had heard is, you know, people actually came out on Sunday after coming out on Saturday, but a lot of businesses are closed on Sunday.
Yeah.
I think that was the problem, the businesses didn't have enough lead time to staff up on Sunday. I think they wanted to be, a lot of them were open, but some of them just didn't.
Yep. But the word I've heard from the businesses, they were delighted. They did really well.
They did.
And you know what? They deserved it because they, I mean, some of these businesses, they weren't open or they were totally cold in their businesses, especially if it was clothing or something. They just, they couldn't really function appropriately because people needed to try on their outfits or whatever. It's great. It's really great. It really did exactly what we wanted it to do. So congratulations to all who...
It didn't matter, I don't want to think the residents, because people that didn't come out, they ordered online, you know? And so they made that conservative effort as well for people to buy gift certificates.
That was a little confusing. People didn't know if the gift certificate would apply or did you have to buy something? But I kept saying, but you can't walk into the dog groomer and say, here's Fluffy. Can I...
Bill me.
Pick her up in an hour, you know? So it's like, well, you had to do something like that, but...
So the ladies here, obviously with Laurie and Jean Enright and Bernadette pulled this together from, you know, acknowledgement, we were getting a grant on Tuesday, to rolling out a program on Wednesday...
I think it was great.
And having the kind of returns, they deserve great credit, I think.
Absolutely.
Round two will come with a little bit of the information and experiences from round one. It'll be a little different, some people get used to it, but I think it's a good opportunity and people have been great and so we're...
So do we, okay, so say we have a huge day on the 15th, is there all of a sudden, stop, money's all spent, are we going to have anything like that?
No, I think, I think part of the goal initially was just to get, so the first goal was to get to the businesses that were most directly impacted, right? Those folks, we continue to hear the stories. By the way, those individual businesses that were impacted, you know, again, we'll show you all the data, we can show you where the gift cards were, where people made purchases and the dollar value purchase, which is great. I think, you know, this may leak out, but the leakout would be that all businesses would likely benefit from the next proposal. Because we certainly don't want to differentiate. We think, we're trying to attract people that are not only just people who always shop at our businesses, but people are coming from other places. We think that that's an opportunity.
Well, fair enough, because if the people are displaced and out of their homes, that affected even businesses out of the zone, I would imagine.
Oh, absolutely.
So...
Well, if you didn't come downtown to go to a business, say, somewhere that was the affected corridor...
You're going to go somewhere...
And you didn't stop somewhere else, say, you didn't stop at any of the businesses in the mills because you weren't going there, we think there was a broader impact. That was our argument relative to the funding source. So we think we'll broaden that up. I will also put ourselves out there that I don't think we're going to do the mail-in, mail-out thing. I think you'll shop on the day, that day you'll come to Town Hall with your receipt and you'll get a gift card that day. And part of the benefit of that is most of the businesses should be able to turn that around pretty quick because most, because it's going to be a Saturday when people are more active, you'll get your gift card right away. And we won't be inundated with a large number of emails, a lot of which require responses.
It was a bit confusing.
It's a confusion on sort of, no confusion, but difficulty internally. So we're working those things, we think it's an opportunity to benefit the broader business community. And, you know, we think this will be going on in some form or another for a long period of time.
One quick question, maybe you don't have the answer to it yet. So those who've maxed out on the previous one, are they still eligible?
Of course. Keep on shopping.
There was no maxing out.
Max!
There is no max out.
Keep on going on other business. Max! Standing max, I saw stands.
The program won't be different, it will not be the same spending implement. It will be different.
But it won't have any back, look back at what you did the first time. You want to spend, we don't care. The first program won't have any effect on the second program.
Per business.
Per business.
Was the max.
There was still no maxing out, I mean, there was maximum number of what you get for the card, but you could spend as much as you wanted.
Spend. The goal is to spend.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
There won't be anything left on the shelves.
We're like that. It's true. It's a few of them like that.
That's in my basement.
You should see your basement.
There are only two pieces of advice to that. Husband and wife should speak to each other before they shop.
Yeah.
I saw some communication issues in the Smiddles. They did not speak. And two, $99.50 is not helpful, since a pack of gum would throw you over the $100 threshold.
Oh my gosh.
And there seems to be a fair amount of people who didn't realize that the next $5 would have got them another $25.
$15.
So we're not going to submit those instructions with it explaining how to spend more, but